Good evening and welcome to the Green County Board of Education meeting tonight. And so, welcome. If you would stand with us for prayer and the pledge, I'd like to ask Aquaria to come on down. Aquaria is going to be a senior the next, in the next two weeks. Wanted to just bring to your attention, this is a pretty chick. She's a current pageant, beauty pageant winner. She was the 2024 Student of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club. And Gerald just told me that she's a rock star at Atlas. So probably lots of good stuff. But we are really grateful that you are here tonight to pray us into a new season, a new superintendent, just lots of new things. So if you'll open us up with prayer, we'd sure appreciate it.
Fill our heads in prayer, please. Dear Lord, I thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us here. Thank you for the many opportunities, the many, everything that you've given us today, everything that you've given us before today, what you have coming for us, and all the unlimited blessings and everything you have in store. Lord, first I want to come to be praying for our upcoming school year, for me as a senior, and for some students who's just starting, real school, kindergarten, or any grade that they're beginning to start. Well, I just thank you for our board of education. I thank you for our school system. I thank you for them listening to their students, them taking our feedback. Thank you for being there for us, supporting us in everything that we've done. Lord, I thank you for every teacher, every new teacher, the retired teachers. Thank you for the teachers who are returning to our school system. And Lord, I also ask you to bless our new superintendent as he enters Green County, and we're going to welcome him with warm hands. And Lord, we're just going to continue to stay by his side. And Lord, I pray that he makes some awesome decisions for our school, for our community, and most importantly, for our students. And I pray that every time the Lord makes a decision, they think of the decision and they think a way your son Jesus would do it. Lord, I just continue to pray for our school, for our community, and for our students. And I pray this all in your son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion for the agenda to be written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Here is four zero. On that note, Dr. Tucker is out of the country, so he won't be with us this evening. But I'm sure he'll probably tune in and watch it online. So I just wanted to know, this is what happens when you're out of town. You see whose seat I'm sitting in, okay? All right, so any discussion on the agenda? None, and we voted on it. So Erin, I'm gonna try to open it.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Gora. Very excited to be a part of my first official board meeting now. And I will give a short report a little bit later about what I've been doing in the last week since you saw me. It's been a very busy week. And we are really focused on getting ready for students like Aquaria, who are going to be with us in a shorter time than she wants. I'm sure that she wants her summer to be, a summer to be a little bit longer. But we are, are working diligently to make sure that we're prepared for the students when they get here and for the teachers as well. And one of the exciting things that they come back to, Dr. Rhodes is going to share with us right now. We have received our Cognia accreditation report. You were giving kind of an unofficial update when the class left. The official report is in. And so, Dr. Rhodes, if you would share with us some more information about that.
Good evening, the superintendant, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Is that better? All right, so my presentation tonight is going to be very, very brief because I believe in the month of May, I submitted a more detailed report to you. There are several attachments there for you to reference if you needed additional information. But my report itself, I just promised one of my colleagues that it's less than five minutes. Four slides, one of which is the title slide, so let's go. All right, so first thing, Green County School System, we began the process in 2023, and we completed the process in April of 2025. And I shared the steps of that process with you. Cognia informed the district leaders in June 2025 that we had been awarded accredited status. That is a huge deal. It is official. We are very, very proud of that. In addition to Green County School System being awarded accreditation status or accredited status, the Early Learning Program, which is the language that Cognia uses, our pre-K program was also fully accredited, all right? The GCSS pre-K program and the district's K-12 schools do receive separate reports. And just before I go any further, I'd like to say that there was a really hardworking group of people that made this possible. They were very diligent, they were professional in submitting evidence, writing narratives, all the things that they needed to do. So kudos to the team that pulled this off, but kudos to all the staff as well, who've been working and giving us things that we could, doing the work that we were able to write about and submit to Cognia. Because it was not based on one year's worth of work. We really submitted more like three years' worth of data. So kudos to all who were involved. The evaluations focus on four key characteristics. They are listed there for you. Culture of learning, leadership for learning, engagement of learning, and growth in learning. And each one of those key characteristics covered several Cognia standards. I believe there were a total of thirty standards for the K-12 piece and thirty-one standards for the early learning portion. Cognia summarized their findings for us, and that's what I'm going to share with you. Basically, what they said we needed to improve upon and what they saw as noteworthy practices. So our K-12 findings, noteworthy practices, opportunities for stakeholder engagement. So they actually praised us and thought that we did a really good job and provided multiple opportunities for engaging stakeholders through Cognia surveys, federal program surveys. And then they listed a few of the programs that they thought were noteworthy as well. You have heard us talk about several of those, the superintendent student advisory council. I heard this wonderful student back here say, "Thank you for listening to me." So Cognia noticed that one of the ways that we listen to students is through the advisory council and getting student voices. The district parent advisory council and the aspiring leaders program. That's one of the ways that we build up our teachers who desire to lead in the district. Our areas for improvement. They mentioned our curriculum review cycle. And specifically, what they were wanting us to do is make sure that our curriculum materials were engaging for students and that students could see themselves in the text. That's one of the things that they noticed. They also noted that although we offer a number of professional learning opportunities for our teachers, we need to make sure that the professional learning that the staff receive is more aligned to what the data says we need. So once again, some improvements that need to be made, obviously, but good work is taking place. Regarding early learning, their noteworthy practices, culture of collaboration among staff and between staff and home, basically parent engagement. We know that our pre-K program, our staff, they do a really good job of getting their parents into the buildings. Sometimes when I'm looking at them going on field trips on a Friday, there are almost as many parents as there are students. So they do a really great job of connecting with parents. An area for improvement for them was making sure that we have developmentally appropriate tools and technology for small children. Some of our next steps, certainly not all of them, some of our next steps or two of them include communicating the evaluation report to stakeholders. I believe that Emily is preparing or has already prepared a press release that she is ready to share so the community can know that we have this accredited status. And then work as a team to determine how we'll build on the strength because we don't want to forget the good things that we're doing, but also what steps we're going to take to improve upon the things that Cognia identified as areas of growth. And that is essentially my report. Any questions?
Good report.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rhodes. I want to take a moment to say the Cognia effort to get accredited is key for lots of things. One of them that's been very important is the opportunity to send our students to college and have them have an accredited degree. So that's one reason why we got, it is a very important mark of the quality of a school district. And I want to thank Dr. Rhodes for her leadership. I know she deferred to the team. But it takes someone who is focused on making sure that we are telling the story that's accurate, true, and also reflects the hard work of the people that are doing this. But somebody has to pull all that together, and it wouldn't have happened without Dr. Rhodes' work. So thank you, Dr. Rhodes, for making sure that it happens and doing it with such great professionals. I appreciate your time on that. Our second information item for you tonight, these are financial reports. So Mr. Rhodes, we've come up here, I assume, financially after to share with you our financial stats.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, superintendent board members. I don't have a lot of wonderful news or exciting news, I guess, to tell you. This report's just going to be kind of seven, seven, this is more of a month in, it's not going to be our year end, of course, we're still about the April and stuff to vote, which we don't usually do that until after we run our July payroll. And the reason we wait to do it after the July payroll is because of the changes in the insurance rates for the health insurance and our TRS rates change and it starts in the July payroll deductions. So the only thing that I really have to share with y'all tonight is, I mean, we've come in across the board on our revenues. You can say they're all above a hundred percent. Some of it was things that maybe just didn't get budgeted is the reason we're over, but we've done well. And I guess that's the most important thing is knowing that we have met our budget across the board. For expenses, again, I said, we still have to pay start schools and everything unpaid for. You'll see that we're under budgeted about $4.4 million. Again, the $2.5 million that we didn't end up spending with our local funds, just in case we had some costs that we wasn't expecting on the new school. So right now, under budgeted about $3 million. But once we book the accruals, we're going to go, we're going to come in somewhere between $2.5 and probably $2.8 million is going to be the cost of the July accruals for our certified staff out of Fund 100. Pay unpaid seven. Our fund balance is at 17.9. I ran the report again today to kind of see where we're at, where we're at because we still have June invoices that are kind of coming in that we're still paying on. So we still have a few expenses. So I know that today it was like 17.7 million. So once we run their accruals, say they're $2.5 or $2.6, I think we're going to, again, like I said earlier, after we're going to end the year, about 15.2 million. We'll, we'll have another collection of TAB taxes that we'll approve at, when we get there, we're still collecting a little bit on adult alarm taxes, motor vehicles. So I'll still have a little bit, so I'm hoping to be somewhere between 5.2 and 5.5 million to end the year. So we'll kind of keep continuing to look closely at our fund balance as we're trying to set our millet rate in the upcoming weeks when we start having our board, our budget hearings and our millet rate hearing. So that's all.
So you're projecting coming in at 15.2? And I think we kind of talked through the comfort level, the comfort zone is around 16 million?
Yes, sir.
So about the $800,000 difference?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? I do, I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to sit down with Connie, but we're on kind of on a short timeline. You got to have some numbers ready to go public in what?
Yeah, I have to have it published. My first hearing is August the seventh on a Thursday. I believe, I think it's the 31st, maybe that Thursday. Before then, I'll have to start getting it published in the paper because I have to publish it seven days before the hearing.
So we all need to schedule some time with Erin and Connie. We probably need to know pretty quick. I've met with you like two, three times now. Maybe I'll go and meet with you about that many times, so. But I'd just like to get input from everybody so we're all on the same page when we go public with whatever that looks like.
I mean, we still know even when we come in and we talk and we still have up until our next board meeting in August and we get ready to approve the millet rate. I mean, we have up until then, so to the hearing, we get new information, new data. I recently got the tax assessor email me some new numbers the other day. They did go down about 8 million after appeals and everything were reviewed and stuff. So it was a little bit lower than, you know, we had anticipated, but it's not, it's not too bad. So, but yeah, at any point, I want to come by and see me.
Do you recall what we ended up with on the fund balance? Starting beginning last year, do you recall what we ended up with on the fund balance?
I believe it was like 616 or 17 million last year.
It was right at 17.
I think it was right at 17.
Do you have any?
I would strongly encourage those of you that haven't had the opportunity with us to come and meet with us, so please just let me know and I'll make sure that Connie are available at your convenience. We definitely want to, just as some context, that, that number of about 16 million feels comfortable as a fund balance for us to be shooting for. For good fiscal practice, to be able to have somewhere around four months of expenses available allows us to feel very comfortable that we won't have to floating loans and we need to cover our expenses. So that's kind of the floor that we're seeking. So we'll be happy to share with you how the revenue helps us get there and expenditures and whatnot, so we can kind of lay in that space.
I just want you to know, I'll be in town all next week, but after that, I'm on vacation. So we're vacationing.
So it should be next week?
If we can do it next week, that's great. If something that can't work out, I'll do my best to try to stay in there.
Keys is a little bit packed because we've got new teacher orientations on keys. So keys is kind of a.
We'll find the time for it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is public comment, and we have none separate, okay? Then I'll take a motion to approve the consistent agenda as printed.
Zoom.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any comments or discussion? Okay. And that will be the approval of the minutes, the special call meeting minutes and so forth. So all in favor, raise your right hand. It was unanimous. And next, we've got the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. On the superintendent's report, I'm going to take a couple of minutes just to update the board and the community on what I've had the opportunity to accomplish in the last week. It feels actually like I've been here a lot longer than that. And not because it's been hard work, but because everyone who I've had opportunity to talk with and to introduce myself, you have been so welcoming. It makes it just feel like family when you're here. And it's been amazing to have the, the great spirit and the great energy that we've had. We had our first cabinet meeting collectively as a team on Monday morning and began to do some good work of creating a strong team concept so that we can begin to make decisions collectively in really meaningful ways, drawing on the expertise and energy of, of the staff this year. So I had a strong meeting to start there. I had our leadership team meeting or administrative retreat with primarily those coordinators and above in the district and also principals and assistant principals. And had opportunity to share a little about myself and my hopes for what we're going to be doing as a district as we move forward. And again, a really positive environment and I hope that, should you have opportunity to talk to anyone on, on the staff, that you'll ask them how things are going and share with me if it's not going as it should be and make sure that we're doing that. The other thing that I've been able to do is set up my office. That's always important, right? And it's a huge space down there, move things around just a little bit. Also had the opportunity to meet the Vanguard team, which is the group of teachers at our middle school, who are going to be wading into this work of CDE, Common and C-based education. You heard about that at your meeting prior to last week's where Ms. Wright was discussing that. They are an energetic and enthusiastic group of teachers. And I was, it was a pleasure to chat with them for just a few minutes as we walked in. Two other things that I just want to call to our attention is we've had two efforts this summer as, as a district to engage parents a little bit more in the work that we're doing. One of those efforts has been around trying to get as many parents and families as possible to get their parent portal through an infinite campus. And so if any of you know anyone who has children, make sure, first question, how are you? Second question, do you have their portal? And one of the things that helps with that is it's a great way to track their students' progress and to know exactly what's going on. And so we welcome to do that. Additionally, there's a second part of that where we're asking families to update some registration information inside the portal. And so it's not about verifying their addresses and all of those things because they have to present documents. There are a number of those things they can change just because they are already in there. And so we asked them to do that. We've had a number of community days and events where we've gone out to the community to do that. It's been successful. However, we're still around, 40% of our parents have actually engaged in that. So anything we can do to get that message out, it would be valuable for them to just go in, verify their information. Particularly, it's helpful if they give us updated phone numbers and email addresses so we can make sure that they're getting the information that they need to get. To that end, we have one other parent, annual experience or event around our consolidated application with CLIP that you probably have heard before. But it's an opportunity for parents to engage in a, in a virtual meeting on July 21st. If you go to our webpage, you'll see the slash page that will open up to allow you to do that. And it just helps us to get as much voice involved as possible for that. So we encourage you to be a part of that as we kind of record and help us to, to do that. But so that's on July 21st. It is through Zoom and will start at 6:00 PM. And the link is right there on the page when you go to the webpage.
And you said something about inviting the board to come to the teacher orientation?
Yes, sir, thank you. You'll see also at your seats, you have two invitations. In addition to the normal sheet of invites, you'll see an invitation for our new educator orientation, which will be on July 22nd. We would love for as many of you who are available to be there just to greet our new educators to Green County and just say hello and get to know everyone. So you'll see that one invitation. And then the second invitation you'll see at your seats is for our annual kickoff breakfast that we do with all employees on 28th. And so we ask that you attend that as well.
Dr. Rhodes, how did you swing this inspiring keynote speaker?
Just luck, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, knuckle up on that.
It's a high bar to be inspiring, so I hope I can live up to that. I've seen the list of who is here in previous years. I may not be quite as good, but I don't have a book to sell, so that is helpful. Yeah, maybe when I retire. So that's my, just a couple of things that, that we've been doing in the last week. And so wanted to share that. And then in the report, you have access to all of these things, but I did want to give Mr. Boswell an opportunity to come up and give a quick report about particularly the progress of the elementary school as we get everybody. And then any other questions you might have about projects currently operating.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, members of board. So relative to the new school, I've got, so we've got a couple of pots of things there. Evergreens, Scope, and the things that we took and we're, we're doing ourselves. We've got a few items that are still left. They were, they were out working on the roof today in Roofleak. They've got some, so they're working on that today and trying to get that done. We've still got some paint issues that need to be touched up and, and fixed. We've got, the fire alarm is finally in good shape. That's been one that's been a, been a nightmare. HVAC, HVAC is, is, is to the end and we're, we've gotten that off of the, off of the punch-out list. We've got some lock sets. Uh, we've got some lock sets, uh, in the, uh, the mullions in the center of the doors. They don't affect, uh, security, but we, we, they're on order. I don't have a handful of windows or come in yet, but they're, they're, they've been ordered and they're, they should be on the way. Uh, we've got, um, five windows that, uh, haven't had some just minor damage that we were making and repairing. Roll up doors and, uh, and a couple of thresholds. We had a little bit of steelwork that is supposed to be done next week. And we had some cracked, uh, some of the drainage structures outside, but we had a couple of them that were cracked. We're, they're supposed to be working on that. That is their list of punch out items that are still on. The things that we took from Evergreen, uh, are coming along. We've got, uh, the floors are, we couldn't have a chance to be in there. We've got those. Those are about ninety-nine percent done. They're working on some of the, uh, epoxy areas, uh, this evening and tomorrow, and they will be done by the end of the weekend. Uh, what else? Uh, rubber flooring is done in the, in the courtyard and in the playground. We've, I've got them coming out next week to do a couple of minor punch out items there just related to how we finished around, you know, a few, uh, of the, uh, the vents and, you know, that kind of thing. Nothing, nothing major, just a few things there. The concrete drainage items that we took over, uh, we've got one pad outside the gym. I mean, outside the cafeteria left to port. That's the last thing on that. Now, we've got tack boards and blackout curtains, uh, being installed next week. The electrical items, uh, that were punch out, or the electrical items that we took from Evergreen are complete. Electricians are still over there, uh, working on the wiring for the motorized lines that will be going in the, that will be going in the gym. That was not something that Evergreen was, you know, was originally doing for us. So, uh, but they're in there working. They'll be in there tomorrow and probably on through the first of the week finishing those up. And that's about, uh, th- those are the, those are the things that are remaining out there. So from the things that we took over, we'll have everything done next week. And, and, uh, from Evergreen's items, there's probably a couple of things like the, uh, like the locks. Um, I'm hoping they'll get them in and get them installed. Again, these are, these are not the door locks. They're the, uh, the center bars between the doors. It's, they're in and they're locked in place. You just can't take a key and unblock them is the, is the issue at this point. So that's not a security issue. Uh, but they found that there was, the ones that they shipped, there was something wrong with them. They had to send it back and, and get some difference. So that's, that's kind of the extent of, of that. Other items, the, uh, the floor has been completely installed. At the middle school, they're finishing that. Um, they were working on it today. They'll be working on it, uh, I think the, they'll be done by next Thursday. And I've got our, uh, we've got a door company coming in to, uh, to trim some doors and get them, you know, uh, set. We'll be ready. We'll be ready for school and ready for them to go back in the gym. I don't have any better news on the, I'm so sorry, I was kidding. I don't have, I don't have better news on the, on the, uh, on the bleachers, but, but we're, we're still pressing to try to get a better date for that. Uh, aside from that, let's see what else we got. Uh, the parking and road paving projects and the, uh, the high school projects outside of the ag building. Well, I, I mentioned at the last board meeting that I was going to look into, could we just, uh, could we just handle the, the theater project due to one of the subs prices? I think it's just too much and we're going to have to keep that in a, in a good situation and not, uh, not self-perform, uh, you know, that stuff, uh, in, in the, in the theater. But we're, we're pulling, I, the, the thing that's helped me up there with the four projects I was trying to put together is the ag building. And I'm, we're still dealing with some site, uh, issues with the, with the city there. Uh, the, I haven't talked to the civil engineer. He, he met with the city yesterday and I haven't got a handle on whether they've got everything worked out there or not. But we're just going to pull that out, take the other three and put them out. I'll have all that stuff out, uh, tomorrow on, uh, on the, uh, procurement website. And, and we'll, we'll get that and get it turned around and back to you.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, sir.
French spoken. Any questions or comments? And, uh, feel pretty confident. Well, I see a big smile over here. I see it with that over there.
And, uh, there.
Life good for you?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ralph. They've been working very hard. Uh, Principal Reynolds has been working really hard with his team as well, trying to get it really done. So we appreciate all his efforts. Um, that is all, or that concludes the superintendent's report. Uh, if there are no further questions, we can move to the action.
Okay, though. Um, that's for superintendent. We have two action items, so, uh, I'll hold it back over to you.
Yes, sir. We have two action agenda items. The first is the DOE local board training plan. Um, this is our verification that you will be locally trimmed as a board, uh, that we have to send in. It is part of, uh, the GSBA work that we do around the unit exemplary board. And so my recommendation is to approve the FY twenty-six local board training instrument as presented.
So moved. Okay.
Second.
Got it? Any questions or comments? Help me here. You know, we had whole board training as a requirement.
Mm-hmm.
This is an additional.
Not additional. This is just a report that we turned into the state that said that we're doing the things that.
Okay. But do we have to, aren't we supposed to when we have a new superintendent, have a new? So we're going to have to, we will have another three hour meeting?
We will, um, and we will work together to find the right time for us to be able to set that agenda and inform with that and, uh, speak with, uh, PKK and to see if there's any additional things that they need to add to that. So we can get all the right things to be doing well. Um, and so we'll look to do that August, uh, would be my hope somewhere around there.
Okay. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. It shows that it carried unanimous. And number two?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. Our second action agenda item is student Chromebooks. Um, as you're aware, the board has been focused before I got here on making sure that the kids in Green County have access to technology. Um, and you've done that by, um, honoring cycles of refreshing Chromebooks. Uh, and so this is a continuing East lost expenditure, uh, to update Chromebooks. Uh, this particular purchase is for a portion of the elementary school that was not refreshed last year and then the entirety of the middle school. Uh, and then we'll be looking towards the high school, um, in the cycle as we move forward. Um, so the, uh, recommendation is to approve the purchase of student Chromebooks from YMS Technologies, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. To be paid from East lost funding.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Carry unanimous.
I do have a question. I do have a question. And advice to the Chromebooks at the high school, the ones that they will be using going forward for this year, are they in pretty good condition?
Yes, ma'am. Clay, you can speak to it better than I can, but ones that I've seen.
Uh, I'm Clay. If you have a memory, I'm Keith's understudy basically. Uh, so the bulk of the devices that we have currently were bought in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, so we're, we're right now in the cycle of replacing those because of, um, manufacturer's warranty will only go for four years. So we're, we're at the end of the bulk of the warranty for most of those devices. So the way that we're replacing them, we're going to take the ones that are still good from the elementary and middle school and give those to the high school to get them through this next year. That should be plenty. High school, they don't break them very many. Um, most of the breakages are the younger students. So, uh, we feel pretty confident that we'll be able to make it through at the high school until we get to the next, the next round of refreshment. Okay?
No questions, Mr. President? Um, normally this is where we would break for fifteen minutes and interact with, uh, the audience and then move into executive session. So if anyone wants an opportunity to say anything to the board or if you've got that time, if not, it doesn't take fifteen minutes, then we'll scoop right on in and get executive session out of the way. So I'll take a, a motion to, uh, hang around for a few minutes and then move into executive session.
So moved.
I'm second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Carries unanimous. So.
Question, sir?
Yes, action will be taken. Thank you, Gerald. It takes a herd to make it work. Hey, Gerald, thanks again for what you do, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Hey, just real quick, how did camp go?
Amazing. Did well.
How many kids did you have and how many counselors?
So we probably, we had forty-five counselors, probably about two hundred kids. Yes, sir. So it was really good.
What was your split between the two high schools and your counselors?
Um, probably. Um, probably.
That is time to do the African exam. Like a constant.
Alright, I will take a motion to come out of the executive session.
So moved.
Maggie?
The second.
Joe?
Mr. Superintendent, I turn the personnel action items over.
Do you want to vote on the motion? Sure. Can we all approve that?
Hey, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm always reminded, no go at that, and darn if I didn't forget it twice.
Ms. Vice Chair, we have a recommendation to approve personnel addition of two resignations as discussed in the executive session.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? There is none. Raise your hand if you approve. It's unanimous. Ms. Vice Chair, I have a second recommendation to approve personnel addition of four recommendations as discussed in the executive session. And I'll take a motion. So moved. Regina?
I say the motion.
Joe? Discussion? Vote? I'll approve. Right hand. And it's unanimous. And I think that kind of wraps up tonight. Is there any other business? It's been fun. It's been real. Don't forget your two invitations. And we will call this meeting adjourned. First time I get that puppy.
He wouldn't do that for...
I got to do it once when Mike was out. In fact, that was the shortest board meeting on record. They are not. Now I'll stand and do a kick and knock. I believe so. I did have an opportunity to talk to Dr. Bulling just a second, but he's on vacation. That is something. We're working on that as well. That is something.